The one on the wall, or?
Or the real time?
This one's closer, so we'll go on that.
Yeah, says seven twenty-nine on my phone. At seven thirty.
Alright, we're good.
We're good. Would you, um, like, call the, I'll call the, uh, meet, regular meeting? Which is, actually, we're gonna use it as a workshop tonight. Um, with Scott, and Scott just arrived. Um, would you call the meeting to order, Ashley, for the Harlem Township Zoning Commission, please?
Mike Kaplan?
Here.
Johnny Manson, here. Tom Need?
Here.
Brittany Hopper? Louis Greenwell is not here. Alan Zetko?
Here.
Alright, Alan, since, uh, Louis is absent this evening, as the alternate, he will be serving on the board, and if we vote on anything, your vote is included.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, with that, and getting back to the agenda, um, introduce Scott Sanders, he just walked in, uh, for members of the public. Scott is the Director of Delaware County Regional Planning. We've been working with Scott in terms of making revisions in our, uh, zoning resolution, and tonight, we're working on, um, the updating of Article Twenty-Two sign regulations. Used to be titled signs and billboards. We're gonna be changing it to just calling it sign regulations. Um, and then some other changes, of course. Well, uh, and with that, let's go on, procedure that we will follow tonight for the conduct of the meeting. If there's any member of the public who wishes to speak tonight, when the, uh, floor is open to the public, we would ask that you would come to the podium, uh, state your name and your address, and then, uh, ask your question, or offer your comment, if you, if that is the purpose that you have in mind. Um, please make sure that, uh, during the course of the meeting, that you, uh, follow the procedure of letting any individual speak without interruption. And then we will move forward, the first thing on, uh, our agenda, um, see if there are, are the gentlemen who are present in the back, is anyone, uh, if either, either of you interested in submitting an application? Is that potentially why you're here? Okay, cuz we will go ahead and move that process forward then. Yeah, what we will need, ask you to do, you have, uh, the number of copies, please give them to our administrative assistant.
So, we do online payments now, instead of checks. So I will, perfect, and then if you guys can just go online, like tomorrow, that'd be great. I should run a loop of those checks for you.
So, the payment hasn't been made online yet?
It was made by check. Some people still think that we do checks, so we put it out there, but not everybody sees it, so.
They're not seeing it.
People go on there, and.
Alright.
Yes, they did submit, he brought them to be submitted.
Well, it still says on the old application, about submitting checks.
Well, cuz we haven't altered, or we haven't approved it, so I can't.
Yeah.
You wanna keep the checks until he makes payment?
Well, next week, we're going to address changing the application, so it no longer says that at the bottom.
Still lies. We put it out there with like Facebook and stuff, but not everybody sees that, so I'm sure what you saw was check. So it is not on you.
Alright, so, uh, we do have thirteen copies?
Yes.
And, um, tell me what the amount is that, that you've made the checkout for, so we can verify that you've got it, we've got it accurate, so that when you do it online, it's accurate.
Okay, my name's Martin Foreman, I'm at one-two-zero-nine-zero Monkey Hollow Road, Sunbury. I'm here on behalf of, uh, Brad and Christina Cannon. They currently live and reside at one-three-two-three-two Center Village Road. They own, uh, multiple parcels of ground on Woodtown Road, um, one of which is what you have in front of you. Um, the first check is for the application fee, it's one thousand two hundred dollars. Okay? The second check is the acreage fee, and that is nine hundred eighty-one dollars and nine cents.
Nine eighty-one point oh nine.
Nine eighty-one, oh nine.
Oh nine. Alright.
And that's based on?
We're just checking the, the number, and then, um, so that you will know. Um, and you're Mr. Foreman, and you're Mr. Cannon? Property owner. Okay, Mr. Cannon, thank you. Got a calculated tone?
Uh, no, I'm.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
No, I'll be, uh.
I thought that's what you were doing.
I was, and then I got distracted.
That happens to me a lot.
Nine eight point zero nine. Do the penny.
Do the penny. Alright, that sounds good. And then, online, do they, are they still making it as one payment now, or two? Please let them know. I thought it was just.
Well, one gets returned, possibly.
Yes, so I think we're separating just in case that one gets returned, it's easier to do an online return, separate, so I would say two, but I'll ask Mike when he gets back.
Yeah, he comes back to work tomorrow. So, it would be, assuming that then it would be, uh, two, you just make out, uh, make a payment online the same way. Two, two amounts separately.
Yes, sir.
Alright, uh, thank you, and, um, with that, what we do tonight, so that you are aware, uh, we really do not do anything in the way of reviewing, uh, we verify that, um, you have submitted the payment. Well, in this case, we're going to be moving forward because of the confusion that we still have with regarding the payment process that got changed. And then, um, we will operate on a assumption that the payment does get made online appropriately. And if there is a problem with that, we would get back in touch with you and change something.
Sure.
Uh, otherwise, uh, what we do tonight is we don't review the application in any way, we accept it and set a date for hearing in the future.
Right.
Between twenty and thirty days, or twenty and forty days from now.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, with that, the next, uh, regular meeting would be in July, we could schedule it for then, I believe, unless, uh, someone wants to suggest them do it differently.
Well, I wasn't reviewing fully, but don't we still have the, the rule that, um, if the same people own the property beside it, and we have to extend the
Yes.
of the, the.
Oh.
And.
Well.
Does that count as a review? Cuz then.
That you've, you've reviewed part of the application, yes. And what that means is, if you want to get that, um, corrected, before we have the hearing, that's fine, you can do that. Uh, otherwise, we would simply open the hearing, and then move it forward for another one. Okay, I was, there's an income. She noticed that you didn't follow, uh, a procedure. Go ahead, Johnny, and explain to him what the problem is.
Is that, um, for notifying, uh, adjacent property owners, you have to consider that this whole parcel is owned by the, um, was it Cannons?
There's two parcels. Yes.
But it's part of this larger parcel?
No, it's, it's its own separate parcel. There's two separate parcels.
Okay, but it is, it is the same ownership?
It is the same ownership, yes.
When it's the same ownership, you need to extend the people that you notify to the boundary of the entire property, uh, only by that individual or couple, corporation, or whatever.
Okay.
They just need to add a few more names.
Yeah, just so I know, moving forward, where, where does it clarify that?
It's somewhere in the instructions.
It's, it's in the, uh, guidelines that are provided online.
Access to. Had everything.
Yes.
Thank you. For my guess for the. Oh, I remember it.
Yes.
For high-tech. Like I guess.
If applicant owns any of the neighboring properties, they must list the first contiguous adjoining, adjacent, or across from property not owned by the applicant.
Four A, under the checklist, is that what you're looking at?
Uh, well, my checklist might be outdated, but maybe.
November twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah. I don't have my trusty purple folder, so.
So there would be, just those additional property owners. And get that information right away to Ashley, because she'll be sending out the notifications.
Okay.
It's just admin, T W P dot com.
And then you rese, in other words, you're gonna revise this list that you provided us tonight, and add those names that's additional.
That's no problem.
And then those folks will get the notification, and she'll, uh, when you bring that new list in, bring her, um, the same number of copies you presented tonight, but oh, you don't have to do the whole application, just that one.
Sure, we'll add, we'll add to that section.
Those neighboring properties work, or if you had to use that.
Yeah.
Um, that would, what you could, you could bring that in with the additional names.
We can do that.
Alright, and then, we will go ahead and schedule it, otherwise, that will present an issue that, at the time of the hearing.
Yeah.
We wouldn't continue to move forward.
Yeah, I get it.
This way, we can deal with it in advance.
I'll be at the Hartford Fair.
Here.
So let's do it in July.
One of the requirements that, one of the requirements that we will be making is that applicants, uh, submit the information to Mike. He's not really reviewing it for anything, except whether or not the requirements are there. If, if you've got the essential components, that's all he's looking at.
Sounds good.
Not really reviewing, but he will check for those kinds of things, so that we don't have to delay it then another thirty days if we come to a hearing and we don't have all the information we need. Okay?
Thank you.
Sure, we'll, hopefully, then, you, if you can, if you can do it quickly, you can get that information to her tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll get it tomorrow.
Slow down the process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so that would be, then, if we set the hearing date, would be, what is that in July's? Early?
Seventh.
Seventh is the first Monday. July seventh. Okay, we'll set the hearing date for, um, application from Bradley and Christina Cannon, and this will be, help me with the number, actually, it's six, I think, right?
Yep.
HTZC twenty-five oh six. And we are gonna receive it tonight. Six, two, twenty-five, then we're gonna set the hearing date for seven-seven. And seven forty-five, folks? That's our usual time. So the hearing will be at seven forty-five on July seventh.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Alright. Mike, Mike, you right.
You also might wanna point out that the application is in both names, and you, they both have to be here.
Alright.
No.
No. We would just delay it another month. If they, if they turn it in and it's not complete, we're not, if you wanna start sitting here and reviewing the application
We shouldn't.
for accuracy, we can start doing that. I prefer that we not. But, since you pointed it out, we may as well inform them.
Um, either should I speak to, to Martin, or to, uh, Bradley, that you, they're two owners of the property, yourself and your wife. You either both have to be here for the hearing, or you have to have a power of attorney that gives responsibility to somebody else.
Yep, you're talking about the July seventh, right?
Correct, yeah. Power of attorney, like, if you're coming, she would sign it and give it to you, or otherwise, opposite, whoever comes. Or you can appoint, um, uh, someone else to serve as, um, your representative, if you prefer. So if Mr. Foreman, if you wanna. Oh, no, you don't. Only if, only if the owners do not come to the meeting. But if they wanna give you the power of attorney, okay, I hear ya, alright. Uh, we were just trying to point that out, that that's an option. But they, because it is jointly owned, then they both need to be present.
Sounds good.
Alright. Anything else? Since you guys are reviewing the application, if you wanna point something else out, do it.
That's it.
Okay. Um, alrighty. We'll go ahead, um, then, and, and move forward. Uh, Scott, I think we can do these minutes quickly, for your, cuz they have been reviewed by, um, I think, me, Johnny, and Brittany.
Yep.
And actually, you've got those, all those corrections included, so if anyone sees something that you think should have been there that isn't, you can point that out, please.
First page in the middle, there's a cross-out that hasn't been removed.
Yeah. That was my only thing, everything else is good.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That seems to happen too often. I mean, it's not Ashley's fault, it's the system.
It turns black, and it's like the tiniest cross-out.
Right.
Here we are.
Maybe that'll get fixed someday with technology.
Probably not.
Alright. Anything else, folks?
Probably not.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of May twelfth as corrected.
Okay.
Alright, I have a motion to approve the minutes of, uh, May twelfth as corrected. Further discussion? There, I know, I have a second first. I didn't hear you, thank you. Uh, seconded by Brittany. Further discussion on the motion? Alright, hearing done, and all those in favor of approving the minutes as corrected for May twelfth, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say no? Minutes are approved as correct. Okay. Scott, let's get to it. Scott gave us two versions. One, I mean, the content is same, except for the fact that on the one version, he took out the deletions, um, so that there's fewer pages, and it makes it a little bit easier to follow or to read. But, as we go through this, uh, Scott, which version do you want to use tonight?
Probably the full one.
The full one, the ones with the deletions. Okay, that way, everybody knows what changes we have made. Alright. Alright. Hopefully, the pages, uh, most of these pages we've already reviewed previously, we go through them quickly.
I hope I caught everything.
Alright. Well, we have the minutes here, pointing out what we need to change. And everybody's got their notes from the last. Okay, page one, let's do it this way, when you're, page at times, Scott? Any comments on page one?
No.
Going forward, page two.
Okay.
Got on any of these pages that you have something you wanna point out, please do so.
Well, I don't, I don't think I will. I think, I don't think that when I was making any changes based on the comments.
Oh, right.
That anything was like, oh, I don't really know what that means, but.
I only have call out on page five.
Alright, so, now hold on one second, right there, Brittany, let's see if we can jump to page one.
Hold my horses.
Alright, nothing on two?
Well, I would just say, just for my benefit, um, under, on page two, under B, um, and Lou would show is moved to section requiring permit. That, and it's not struck, stricken out, it's just in a different color, that's not gonna be in the final documents.
Of that in blue probably shouldn't be. That's just a note probably for us.
But obviously, it won't be in the coming. I don't, you're probably not wanting it, this one, but. Shouldn't say this one. You probably won't want it in the markup one that you present to the trustee.
No.
Not in the unmarked.
We're good.
Okay. Page three. Page four.
Oh, suspense is killing me.
I keep looking up like, I can't stand so I can do my.
It's not even a big thing.
Page five.
We skipped to page six.
Oh, in the top.
Just jump, you want to skip five and go to six?
In the top table, and it's missing a, um, unit of measure. It should be minute, minimum distance from side lot line feet. It just says twenty-five, twenty-five, what?
Infromcies, right.
Just like the previous.
Yeah.
Ones.
So free now.
Alright, anything else on five? We'll go to six. That was quick, thank you, Brittany.
Oh, no problem.
What was the section on that? I feel like I don't have the right.
Section?
I'm going to front of the.
Page five.
Um, the new, yeah, we're talking about page five on this newest document.
Yes, I think mine's different. I printed the same for everybody, I just got something different, I think.
You wanna get?
We're using the ones with the cross-out still. Oh, four.
I thought we were doing the final. I got it, never mind, just kidding.
Okay.
Oh, you got it?
Yep.
Alright. Sorry about that, I did, I guess I didn't get us all on the same page.
Good.
Like I thought I did.
I missed the mark out.
No problem. Alright.
And we're here.
We're good now, uh, so we've gone to page six.
I'll take that blue text out.
And this note that's there just telling us what happened to that item. That's the, the blue color, it's not in the document. It won't be in the document.
I could tell it already wasn't in. One that has things taken out already, not in that one.
No, but I'll have to, well.
Figure out where it is.
I'll have to go back. I may go back to this one just to be safe.
See if I got a note about that. Alright, I guess we'll go to page seven. And this is where we deleted a lot. Coming up to section twenty-two oh five.
I think we got rid of the whole section.
Yeah, basically.
Like page seven through.
Well, got rid of twenty-two oh six.
So we deleted, yeah. Page, um, all of page seven. Deleted all of page eight. Now, on page nine, same thing, all page nine is deleted. All page ten is deleted. All page eleven is deleted. We really made this a lot shorter. And now, uh, all page twelve is deleted.
And we're back to business.
And now, we're on page thirteen, which is section twenty-two oh five, uh, prohibited signs. It was oh seven, and we're deleting, uh, the number oh seven, changing it to twenty-two oh five, because we deleted all of twenty, section twenty-two oh five, and all of section twenty-two oh six. Meaning that seven then becomes five. Okay, so this is where we are now on page thirteen. We all together? Great.
Have a question on twenty-two oh five, uh, C. The signs that are erected and maintained in trees, or grown on rocks, or other natural features. All of the cemeteries have a large stone with a bronze plaque on them stating the name of the cemetery.
But, is that painted or drawn?
No, it's a plaque.
The rock probably wasn't there to begin with, right? So it was part of though. And it's a public entity on the township.
I think they're brown, I don't think they were just carved into the stones. We did have, we had a monument company do it, but I think they did a plaque on them. No, it is not painted or drawn.
And everyone says, those are all the government entities, cuz we own that.
Township would even paint it on the rock if they weren't.
It would be, that's another way of looking at it, they potentially are exempted because it's a government, it's government property.
It doesn't say that anywhere, but that's.
Yeah. I don't know that there's a need for any changes in C. Does anyone, do you think there's a need for a change?
No, I just wanted to, to have it clarified.
Okay.
So that people were trying to. So that people were trying to.
Yeah, has anyone got any concern on it? I, I thought, maybe I'm wrong, but I thought we had a brief discussion about that with Mike and he said, he didn't see that as a problem previously. Um, what about, go ahead, Tom.
I'm just trying to, the, uh, color pines, the entry sign is. Embossed in a very large rock.
Is carved?
I think, I think it's carved and then, and then painted. Inside the.
The lettering is painted.
Yeah, I think the intent is not that you can't have a sign that's made out of a rock, I think it's that you can't take a rock.
And just paint it. Paint, paint sign what, or paint the rock white and then. Paint them with black lettering, paint a sign on it. That's why we're trying to prohibit. That sort of. And again, it's a matter of, I guess, interpretation, so.
We can say, you know, it, it identifies the location. And, and I, I mean, I don't have an objection, just bringing it up is.
No, no, I understand what you're saying.
Mike, I, I would think. That was part of the, of the plan unit developments, it was part of the plan. I think the, it's, it's part of the plan.
It's in this land.
Apply to it, right?
We're done.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it was.
If it's a part of a planning unit, and it's part of the plan that was approved by the. Running commission and trustees and. Saying it's prohibited, it was part of the plan that was approved, so I think it's all right. That would be my.
Yeah, your points will take in there, if it's part of a planned district and it gets approved. As part of that district, then.
It's done.
It's done, it's approved.
Yeah.
All right.
And one more. Not with D, but for the, um. And it may be that, that they're not painted directly on a wall or roof for building. The structure, but sometimes you see a lot of. Old farmhouses that. The roof shingles, they spell out. The date that was, uh, established or something like that. Um, is that? Is that something that would be affected by? Uh, letter E?
I don't know where it is, but I think farm buildings are. Exempt from most of what be.
Well, but most of them aren't farm buildings anymore, most of them are just.
Excepts for identification signs on agricultural buildings.
Not really an ID sign either. It's just.
Also not painted.
No. But have you seen what I'm talking about with the?
Well, I guess. If, um. Because.
Technically not painted and they're maybe technically not mounted, because they're actually, you know, shingled into the roof.
I know.
Usually.
I, I've seen them, I can't think of one offhand here in our township, but I know exactly what you're describing. And.
Any comments from people who deal with signs? Is that considered a sign, or is that just an architectural feature?
Well, yes, you know, because agriculture would, I'd say being example, if it was a commercial, I would say then that, they didn't have to, you know, that would probably not be allowed.
So where, where do we come down then on, uh? Backup signs.
Mail pouch.
Mail, yeah, thank you.
Help out sign. I think it's agriculture, right?
It's on the side, it's on the side of a storage shed, it's, you know, I mean, are we saying? Um, because that would seem, you know, signs that are painted directly on the wall or roof of a building or structure. That's pretty well defines a mail pouch. Sign on a shed. And we saying, you don't want to see that, or we don't really care, I don't, I personally don't care.
But I don't either, I. And it's sort of nostalgic in some ways, but. And they should be on bars.
Well, you're not. If, if one exists, this is not going to make you. Take it away. And nothing, I mean, even if it becomes non-conforming, that's not going to get anybody in trouble.
And there are, there are two in the township.
Sure. There are two mail pouch signs in the township.
You're not going to see a new one. They wanted to use some old chingles to put there. Or a barn got relocated to our township and they wanted to bring the shingles. So I, I mean, I think. Covered. And as we kind of said before, it doesn't sound good to say this, but. There is some interpretation of.
There's a sign off of. One sixty-one in Licking County. If you like to eat, thank a farmer. It is on a barn. But. I mean, it's, it's.
Well, there's one of those in Brown Township.
What would happen if? A barn were damaged and then repaired? The aside came off. Storm. Technically, they couldn't put that back on without coming to a variance. Is what I'm hearing.
I guess if you wanted to follow the letter.
I'm just saying, right, if someone says, I'm going to put my barn back to where it was, or my building, put the roof back on. What's the worst that happens?
Yeah.
Is the zoning inspector says. That doesn't fit our code. Their option is. BZA.
Yeah. So we agree it would be non-conforming. Would it? Under the, under the letter of the law, it's a non-conforming use.
Yeah, they replace it as is, it would not be conforming. And is there a? Is there a reasonable workaround, so that's what I'm driving at? It goes to BZA.
Yeah, BZA will listen to anything. You know, I'm not, I'm saying, you know, that, I'm gonna prove everything, but I'm saying, you know, it's. They have a, a valid reason why, and, and, and document everything, I see why it would not be a problem.
Uh, if, if it relates specifically to something that, that it's. Like, we, we keep identifying the mail pouch signs, those have been there. Do we want to address it, or do we want to just leave it the way that it is and let the zoning inspector handle it?
I'm happy leaving it the way, leaving the text the way, the way it is and just.
Yeah, and allow the zoning inspector to interpret.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm in favor of that.
Let BZA handle it.
Well. If the zoning inspector cites them for having, not for having an illegal sign, then it would go to the BCA. Otherwise, it won't go to the BCA.
Unless it was destroyed and they wanted to come in and redo it.
Well, that's true.
Yeah, and that's my point, that's where, and you can picture something happening.
Yeah, that would be what you were asking about, if it's there, as it's non-conforming, but now they want to repair it because it got destroyed by. A storm or something. Okay. And moving forward. Fourteen, page fourteen.
Uh, I have a couple of things.
No problem. On fourteen.
So this continuation of section twenty-two oh five. Prohibited signs.
On thirteen.
On thirteen.
Well, but it, but it continues on page fourteen.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, top of the page, okay.
These would be, um. New sections, new, new letters. Uh, one. Um, I would put, um. It's. Worked I. I would simply put billboards. Billboards are prohibited signs. As far as I know, we don't have any billboards in the township, I haven't seen any billboards, haven't documented any billboards. What this used to be called. Signs and billboards, and I would just draw the line and say. No. No billboards, we don't have to explain it, we don't have to, anything more about it, just I create billboards, create.
So you would add after H, you want to add I?
What's the difference between a billboard and one of those? Giant, uh, pieces of plywood saying that there's a. Project going on, or that there's, uh, lots for sale, or.
Well, the construction signs are one thing, we address.
They're, they're addressed separately. That, that, that they would be permitted.
So those are not considered billboards?
No, they wouldn't be considered a billboard.
I think a billboard is an advertise, is an advertisement.
That, so that's the difference between. What a sign is and a billboard.
Well.
Is if it's an advertisement.
I don't, I don't think we have a definition of.
You don't, but, uh, if you don't define it. And you allow certain sizes, then obviously what you allow, you would allow, and. Anything bigger than that is going to be. A billboard, this just, I mean, it's a good point, it just puts people on notice that. Yeah, since we're removing that word, it's, it's a good idea to put it in there is.
Yeah, I mean, uh, e- even under abandoned uses, I don't know if we've taken billboard out entirely. But even an abandoned billboard. Um. I mean. I don't know if it's necessary to address it, because it's not a practical problem in the township. But I'd like to see us. Prohibited billboards and just not, not have to explain it or. Put anything more about it.
So you just want to add I billboards?
H I billboards, yeah.
You're just going to add, under I, just be one word?
Yep.
Scott, your opinion? Sure, it's okay, from your perspective.
Anything that's bigger than what you allow is going to be a billboard.
Yes.
You could say that, billboards, colon. Any sign larger than. What is otherwise allowed here, but I don't know that you need to say that.
Don't, that we didn't need, we need to say that. Well, what if, what if somebody, you know, keeps it within the right side? And is it still a billboard?
Doesn't matter, I mean, if you meet the standard.
If it's, if it's, if, if it fits the size, if it fits the dimensions, then it's a sign. It's a billboard.
It's the land, the plywood that says land coming.
That's true. So we wouldn't call it a billboard. That again comes back to the zoning inspector who will be responsible for the enforcement, so if we just put the word billboard there.
But he doesn't know, or the next zoning inspector doesn't know that we defined that as. Anything bigger than what's allowed. Then we might still need a definition in article four for billboards. Has anything bigger than.
Say you'd probably Google it and say, that's a billboard. Or. I, I, I mean, at, at some point you have to leave, you know, the zoning inspector some discretion to say. Um, we've gotten complaints. Looks like a billboard. I'm going to call it a billboard, and it's prohibited. Take it down.
You mean, the definition that comes up is. Three different things, a piece of thick plank. Armed with iron plates. And fixed to the. Oh, that's for like shipping. Flat surface as of a panel or fence on which bills are posted. Or a very large advertisement along the side of. For each room, I mean, that's what I would think, it's a big sign. I think you're okay, sure.
Think we're okay, we just put the word billboards? Nothing else? At my, or, okay, I'm sorry, I wasn't following you there, so. Are you saying we're okay with nothing, or you was saying we're okay if we add the, as I, billboards?
Being prohibited. It's okay to add I and add billboards as a brevity.
All right. We're in agreement then, I guess.
Singular pluralized, I don't know what matters, but. What, what, what were you, signs, yeah, so it should be plural, billboards.
Yeah, that's all right.
Uh, so that was one, the other. Um. Item I'd like to add. That I don't think is addressed so far in prohibited signs. Or signs painted on. Here I have vehicles, but it's trucks or trailers. Uh, parked within sight of the right of way or adjacent property. And I've got an example, which I don't have on my computer until, I don't know why it didn't download, um, of. Uh, Jay Beckner Construction, who's got a large sign. Uh, painted on the side of a compactor, garbage compactor. Which he has parked way in the back of his property, you can't see it from the road, that's not the intention, it's just. But if it were parked up by the road and he moved it there every day and left it parked there, then in my mind, that's, that's an advertisement. If it were a trailer and you'd see them, you drive around New Albany and you see landscaping trailers. Always parked in the same place, right across the street from. For, from, um, Eagles Pizza. At the advertisement. And I would just say, that's as much of a billboard and the billboard or as much of a prohibited sign as anything else I can imagine. And I would simply say. Not going to prevent you from painting your truck and advertising your business on your truck, just don't park it at night. Where it's visible from the right. Park it in back someplace.
What if their driveways in front of their house, are they going to have to drive through their yard to park in behind their house to hide the truck?
Particularly careful for that one, Tom.
You're gonna have people mad that you're derailing their yard by making it park in the back of the.
Yeah, but I, I, I don't know that we're talking about the sign on the side of a pickup truck that simply identifies a business. But this is.
I know.
Yeah, like a truck with a trailer out the back, I mean, if you're pulling into your driveway, you're not going to detach your trailer every night if you're working, right?
But are you, are you gonna? I don't know, you're gonna, you're saying that, that the driveway is not long enough to get the trailer out of the. Visible from the road.
I mean, my driveway. Is. At the road, I mean, I have, and I don't have access to put anything in my backyard, my backyard is fenced. So. I mean, my truck would be sitting in my driveway with the trailer on it.
I'm sorry, Tom, what was your proposal again, what did you?
I think he wrote, has a statement in mind.
Well, I, I, yeah, what I read is. Prohibited. This would be J. Signs painted on vehicles parked within sight of the right of way or adjacent property. Which picks up language that we've used about. Where you can and cannot put signs.
For how long, overnight?
Yeah, I, I think you're opening.
You see a lot of questions around that, Tom. Man, I parked something there for two days. Two, three days. Overnight.
O- o- okay, so. So you want to be able to allow that, but then somebody who. Has five acres and still parks his trailer. Right up by the road and leaves it parked there day and night. Not using it for business, he's really using it for advertisement.
I thought you were.
On a vehicle.
Yeah.
If it's.
Non-operable.
If it's not operable, then no, that's a junk vehicle anyway.
It's operable. You just.
Trailer, man, doesn't.
As long as it's operable and moves. And then even, it'll be hard to do that, I think. Unless you've got some timeframes around it. Yeah, I mean, if you, if you want to do that, you'd need to define times, and then also say that it's somebody else's property. So. If it's. And now I'm thinking about the definition. What's the downside of including the? Once you say that any sign is something that's affixed, portrayed, or depicted. On a building structure, uh. Just, I'm just playing here.
Yeah.
Vehicle. Lot and or tract, then you can define it as a sign, then if it starts sitting. In the wrong place, you can start saying that's a sign. And you're advertising. The landscape business.
You'd have to, like, vehicle or trailer, as well.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying we should, I'm just.
Yeah, that's one way to.
Allow.
Yeah.
And, and would this include things that the people who put for sale in the front of the windshield and leave the. You know, vehicle parked down there by the road so that. People know it's for sale.
I would say that, that, that. Typical of a temporary.
That's a temporary thing, yeah.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about it, but, but something that's. You know, that's chronically parked. In one place. For months on end, doesn't move. Not that it can't move. Um, simply to advertise. A product or a service means. It's no different than a billboard.
Why don't we add to the definition vehicle or trailer, and then it can be regulated. Per the rest of our sign regulations, just like any other sign.
I'd be okay with that.
I think that's better. I like that.
Don't have to mess around with the wording for prohibiting.
Again, if it moves around a lot, I think any, whether you're, I mean, your zone, current zoning inspector, sure, and you make a good point about that. The next person doesn't always remember how things are interpreted. I think most people would say, if, if the thing moves, they're not going to. Try to tag it as, I mean, I know that there was some cupcake place. They were on TV once and they were. In the back of the, that strip center on Powell. Powell Road. That has other stuff in it and they would park their truck out front, but I think. In that case, what's that?
Batgirl Bakery?
No, I don't, well, maybe.
Say I know the other truck out front, yeah. That or like Gigi's cupcakes. I know they have a truck.
But I think that, that was almost okay because their only entrance was in the back and so. But even then, that was, uh, uh, there's a. There's an eighteen wheeler. On seventy, on I seventy-five down in Kentucky that I've driven by many times and it. It used, I mean, finally the sign fell off, but obviously that's why I was there to try to get away from that sign. Regulations, I assume.
I mean, you don't want people to not be able to. Put their signage on their trailers and things like that, but you don't want somebody to. Get a fifty-three foot trailer. Just to park it in their front yard to make a sign and not think that they can be regulated. So.
So what do we say?
Home with that?
Every, every, you know. Well. Lots and lots of businesses out there have vehicles that have. Their names and how to contact them on them and.
Right.
That, that shouldn't be a problem.
No. Plus they're not moving.
Even, well, even if it's, you know, parked in front of their business every night. You know, you can drive around the square in Sunbury. And see. You know, the flowers business has their truck van parked out in front. Drive down to.
Yeah, a little, a small panel truck.
With their sign on it.
Uh, people may have a personal vehicle. That they. Park in front of their house. But it has the name of their business on it. Is that gonna be prohibited?
No. But the issue we're talking about is stuff that's not mobile. It's parked, it's sitting.
Well, does it fall, would, would, would the. Phrase that we already have in here, any sign not specifically defined by the express terms of the Harlem Township Zoning Resolution. Is prohibited. That covers a lot around. Would this not be covered by that?
I don't know. I feel like I could argue that. Trailer isn't a sign. May have a sign on it that you need to murky water, probably. Yeah, if I said to define a sign and I go look at a definition of a sign, it's not gonna say at the side of a car or truck or trailer. Typically would not be how I interpret that.
Unless we add it.
Unless we add it to the definitions.
And I agree with that. That's how we get the circle going right now. Yeah, if you pick it up in the definitions, then fine.
And you could put, um. Here's non-moving vehicles.
Yeah, I think that's where you're getting into. Someone's got their truck parked for their house for two days over the weekend. It's not a felony violation. It moves on Monday to go to work.
Yeah.
They might leave it there for a week while they're on vacation. Right? The week isn't the issue. It's that extended period of time where it sits and.
The tires go flat.
The tires are inoperable.
But they're like, that's just, that's just a trailer. And so, so there's. It's, it's not, it's not dry brown, Brian Tree Service. So if that were parked permanently by the road. I would object to that.
Well, you're saying permanently, though. You're not saying.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's, that's as big as.
Pickup truck with a. Yeah.
So how, I mean. If somebody were to do that, are we just saying? You gotta round us.
What's gonna happen if we, if we do that? If we put a period of time on it, it's seven twenty-one, you know, twenty-one, thirty days, something.
Move it.
And, well, they'll move it. And if they keep moving it, I don't know how we deal with that if it. If it's mobile. But. It needs to be out of the site, right? That's the point of this, what we're doing here. But if they don't move it in thirty days, then zoning inspector could cite them.
Maybe, yeah, maybe it is better to put it under prohibited as. I don't know how people are leaning because we're identifying the issue, but we're not, we're not saying. Maybe it's better to put under prohibited as. Signs affixed to vehicles that. Don't.
Vehicles or trailers that don't move. Or have a period of time on it.
Well. Again, maybe. You wait until you figure out what the. Issue might be before you try to define it. More. I know you don't wanna respond to things, but. Instead of coming up with some weird sort of eight, whatever your junk me, junk vehicle definition is now, which is probably. So many days within so much of a calendar year within this.
We tried to take it out of the ORC, but.
That, I get complicated. I'm, I'm trying to keep it. Simple. I mean, it seems like we. You're leaning toward doing something.
Well, I agree with Tom. I do think it's a problem for it just. To sit. And if that's intentional.
If you say non-movable and they move it. Okay, I mean, if. Somebody's not gonna say, well, I'm gonna move it every two weeks. Yeah, and they just move it from one side of the. Of the, the right way to the other and ping pong's back and forth.
Why don't you just put up a sign at that point? Let's just follow the regulation.
I mean, I, I was leaning towards including it in the definition, but if that's not. That's not gonna fly.
I think there's, there's a really big difference between. Putting it on an eighteen wheeler. A sign on an eighteen wheeler and a sign on a pickup truck.
Yes.
There's a big difference.
Agree. And I was.
And how do you?
And I was thinking more of the. The larger.
But even if somebody. Takes a pickup truck that doesn't run anymore and they put a sign on it. And they say that's not a sign, it's, because they're, it's bigger than you allow or it's a second sign. That's almost more likely to happen because that's, hey, I'll use my pickup truck that broke down as my new identification.
Within.
So I think define, I mean, you're leaning toward defining a size and I think you. You know, once you say more than this many square feet, then.
Well, that's what we're dealing with billboards. Yes, yes, billboards are really big signs.
I've seen like the old classic trucks that have like Eddie's garage or whatever on the side. I guess they could park that out front and use it as a. Advertisement for like their mechanics.
Yeah, but there's a farm market in. I mean, it's a business in Shawnee Hills. It has an old truck like that. It's, it's cute. But I, I wouldn't.
Like an Apple Lincoln truck. I've seen those in a lot of orchards.
I wouldn't penalize that, but.
Yeah, are vehicles the problem with the trailers? Vehicles would, are operable or interoperable, right? I mean, if it's sitting out there and the tires have gone flat and it's got a sign on it, it's inoperable view.
Cause then you can get him with, then you can get him with a junk.
Well, that's right. Yeah, that, that, that fits, but it's it. Because the vehicles, whether they move or not, because. Seems complicated, but the trailers are different. They're a large billboard.
Yeah.
What's, uh?
Twenty-five foot, fifty-three foot, whatever it is, you're gonna paint something on it.
I was just thinking, give, if we list, use Tom's, whatever he worded here, and we put in some kind of a time limit on it, will that resolve the issue? We're not getting anywhere with this, so I want us to make a decision, one way or the other. We're either gonna. Add this, put a time limit on it, or we're just gonna forget about it.
I think he's got a point about the trailers.
So. What was, how, how did you?
I seventy-five, you're talking about.
Well, that's the way I worded it, but.
Signs painted on vehicles.
Yeah, and we're, what we've been.
And or trailers.
Or and or trailers. I think trailer is a bigger problem.
They could add that. Signs painted on vehicles and or trailers.
I drive it for.
Parked within sight of the.
Fall, it's gonna be.
Right of way or adjacent properties. Or.
What's this adjacent properties thing?
I don't know why I added that either.
Well, it's, 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 it's in here for.
Hope it's not in the line of sight of like the neighbors.
You know where, you know, you know where that is?
I'd say you'd stick with from the right of way because that's in your definition of signs.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're gonna take all the signs out of right of ways anyway.
I mean, visible from the right of way.
Yeah, it's not the sign has to be in the right of way, it's that visible from.
Yeah, but that, and that was somewhere. In the sign regulation, the way it sits now is that was the wording and I just picked it up.
That could be somebody's entire driveway, though.
That's.
Well, if we use what.
No, uh, yeah, what, yeah.
Visible.
So I disagree with what I just said and I agree with Tom. This definition includes all signs visible from any public right of way or adjacent property. Where, where is that? The very first line.
That's a very, very beginning.
Yeah, that's great. First line of the definition. First line.
So I just.
All right, so.
Thank you.
If we just add a phrase for. A time limit.
What you, what, what's the wording again? On Tom's?
Just read, I mean, just using the statement as it's written and add a time on it.
Yeah. What is his state?
So what, what I wrote and which needs to be changed, signs painted and not necessarily painted, just signs on vehicles or trailers parked within. Sight of the road. Or a sign, or visible from any public right of way or adjacent property. For more than days. Fourteen days? Because that's what we have in the junk cars. Section, I think it's fourteen days.
I think fourteen's too short. If, like I say, if someone goes on vacation for three weeks and leaves the trailer, we're not gonna be, it's not an issue. To me, it's longer for the trailer. Junk cars are obvious, right?
Well, yeah, even if, if they're gone for two weeks. There, nothing's gonna happen. I mean, if you get, if they get contacted by, they'll be contacted by the zoning inspector or he'd leave a note on their door. So when they get back, he would be there. So fourteen days may be okay for that reason is what I'm suggesting.
I don't know, thirty days seems like a better tag for me. But that's okay. I can go either way.
I'm good with fourteen days.
All right. What, let's have the wording because we're trying to finalize this.
Scott, signs on. Vehicles or trailers. Visible from any. Public right of way or adjacent property. For more than fourteen days. Do we have to say we're prohibited or?
And they're prohibited.
But again, this, this to me, this to me says that, you know. Some truck advertising cupcakes or whatever, or, or a van or whatever, advertising cupcakes. That parked in somebody's driveway that's visible from the right of way is prohibited.
But it's not parked there for more than fourteen days. It's parked there and then leaves. It's parked there for a day.
Well, that's not, that's not fourteen days then. It was there for one day or two days or two, maybe a week and then it's moved. And it comes back.
Yeah, there, I mean, it, it is gonna be coming back every day.
Right.
Yep.
So then the time starts over again?
Every day.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's the way I would be viewing it anyway.
So who's going to be watching that it's gone for?
Nobody. I mean, it.
Whoever is very irritated that it's there.
No.
They're gonna be watching.
A strong opinion about the fact that it's been.
It's actually gonna be like any other sign that. Mike deals with, it's gonna be complaint driven.
Yeah.
And that's pretty much what all the other ones are is, he's not driving around looking for violations. He's. Acting when somebody complains. So you've got Betty next door that's mad that. Construction truck with the trailer has been sitting in the driveway for two weeks. Betty's gonna call and complain and then he'll go out.
Well, what we don't want is somebody find. Uh, a trailer. It's a junk trailer and parking it.
Yeah.
And putting a sign on it. And then just leaving it there permanently, which somebody might choose to do. Well, they did do it up on, I don't know if it's still there. I might, can't remember now. Last time I drove down twenty-three, there used to be one up there on twenty-three. Still there. A trailer, yeah.
It's not unusual for people to do that.
Yeah.
Right at thirty-six, thirty-seven.
And that's a bill, that, they were basically.
What meant that had a sign on it.
Intent there was to use it as a billboard without having to. Uh, erect a billboard. Um. So is this wording that we're talking about here for J? Are we adding it? I wanna vote on this. Let's get it, let's get a decision and move it forward.
Yeah, good.
All right.
All in favor of adding J? As Tom has read it, signify by saying I.
I.
I oppose, no. All right, we are adding it.
I'm done with those.
All right, so now that has to be, the wording of that. We'll have to go to Scott so that it'll appear in the. Next and hopefully final draft.
Uh, yeah, I've got what we.
Good.
All right, uh, twenty-two oh six, general regulations. Page, the rest of page fourteen. Just did some formatting changes there.
Nothing.
Yeah, all right, going on page fifteen.
It's one, one word in blue that you'll pick out.
Page sixteen.
Didn't do much here, huh?
This is just about non-conforming for the most part. Once you get going on this page, yeah. Hey. Page seventeen, permit. Twenty-two oh nine.
Oh, a couple of really minor things. On the first line where it says no sign except as provided for in Article twenty-two oh three of this resolution. I think should say section twenty-two oh three.
Yeah. Maybe it should say Article twenty-two, section twenty-two oh three.
Well, I, I, that's what I thought.
We're in Article twenty-two. I think just. Putting section instead of article would be fine.
Yeah, and I think that kind of follows other, sorry, usage in this.
Whatever it.
At least in this article.
If that's consistent, that would be the way to do it.
Some sections that are.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at twenty-two oh two classification, those signs which are, which require no permit.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's exactly what it is.
In section twenty-two oh three.
So it's. Just change the word article to section.
Yeah, and then I would capitalize resolution, but I don't know, it's, could be a can of worms. Um. And then, um.
Twenty-two oh three. Now, did you want that changed? Section twenty-two oh three of this resolution? Did you want that changed to something else? No.
I just wanted to capitalize.
The word resolution is capitalized, yeah.
Um, and then under F. Um, we've got some kind of dating there, which is. Um, not fixed. I don't know how we. How we put an actual date in there. You see where, Scott, you see where I'm? Yeah, I just don't wanna miss something like that and have it. Come up with a blank date or, or, or. An unusable date.
Where signs approved or conditional use process prior to the amendments approved on, we don't know what the date is that we're going to approve this.
That's absolutely right. And we don't, it's gotta be approved by the trustees, but we know it's not XXXX twenty-twenty-six.
Yeah.
And I don't wanna.
Just a placeholder.
We, I, I, I don't wanna lose sight of it.
Put that in blue or something.
Okay, we just say. Uh. Have it changed so that it says. Process prior to. Um. The approval of the amendments. By the township trustees.
No, because it's gotta, it's gotta go through the referendum process and, and until it's actually. Considered.
Well, then forget the, what I said about the board of trustees, just say approved.
Um, yeah, and, but I, I mean, I don't mind having a date in there because then somebody can say. This sign was there before that date and we say prove it and they show you photographs. And there it is. Then it's, it's, um, you know, it's non-conforming. If we don't have a date, then we're always hunting, hunting around.
Pick a date? No.
Yeah, just arbitrarily pick a date. The date that it goes into effect is gonna be thirty days. Uh, after, after the trustees approve it if there's no referendum.
Yeah, so if someone were to look for it, they, you did go back on with your minutes to find the date. That's where you're headed. You're trying to avoid.
I think we just. You know, keep track of the, and, and put the date in when it's, the date is, it was known.
The, that date of this amendment. Yep, then, then when the amendments are finalized, approved, that's the, the date.
Again, I hate that. Because people, people never know when that is. They come and ask, when is that, when was that?
So we'd have to make it.
Said a lot.
We'd have to make it as part of the motion to approve. To add the date in.
No, it's on the.
We do put it at the bottom of every page.
Yeah.
But.
Every, bottom of our pages when it was.
Well, once it's amended again, then that.
You lose it.
That would change.
Yeah.
But it would still be every conditionally approved sign prior to that date.
Always, and the date is going to actually be on the article though.
Yeah.
They're on these now, it says revise.
Again. And then you lose that date.
Date just keeps moving forward. But it's okay because every sign that's.
They would have already had a sign up.
But you think there aren't going to be anymore if we took the conditional use. The BCA out.
There won't be anymore. Yeah, once that language is gone, you're right, but.
Is that the only place in your resolution where you have?
I saw it, I saw it somewhere else while I was reading through this. I don't know if it's in this article. Probably is. But you did the search for twenty-twenty-six, they, they all might pop up. I didn't.
There was some kind of. I wonder if that adult. That adult language has some study here that some study was done. That's the first thing that I think of.
Well, if we leave it this way, then it's. It won't have a year, I mean, the dates would be. Instead of being twenty-twenty-six, it could happen this year, twenty-twenty-five.
Yeah.
So.
So we take Keith's advice and just go with. Uh, prior to the date the amendments are approved.
Yeah. If we do that, then when the amendments get approved. These are men. If this never gets changed.
BCA is, I have an, an issue with the dates, it's like, nail on the bottom, and then I go back.
The dates, the dates.
I still have a previous copy. I still have a previous copy. And I go back and see when the change happened.
It's at the bottom of the page.
Yeah, but.
On the document.
But I say, when I need the date, I, I just go back and look at my old copies of the resolution and, and find the date that, it used to say that, and then I'll find the, where, where it went away. It takes a little more investigation, but.
Yeah.
It's doable.
Your point, Tom, it's in the overlay thirty-six point oh two. As the effective date of this amendment to the Harlem Township zoning resolution on February fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, there was a date in there, overlay. I'm curious about that.
I don't, I don't remember. I mean, I, I don't mind going with, with, with Keith's suggestions, we just leave it without a specific date.
Just put a period after approved. We, okay, that's fine.
And then, for signs approved through the condition.
I thought that before.
Prior to.
The date these amendments.
For signs approved through the conditional use process prior to the.
Date of this amendment.
Did.
Or these amendments.
Date.
These amendments.
Prior to the date. This way you want to word it, prior to the date.
Date of these amendments.
Prior to the date these amendments were approved.
No, no, prior to the date of these amendments.
Prior to the date of these amendments.
Period.
Prior to the date of these amendments. Approved. You're tracking the word approved down, am I correct?
We already have it in the sentence. For signs approved through the conditional use process prior to the date of these amendments, period.
Yeah, so the word, the period comes after amendments.
Yes.
All right. Yeah, we all in agreement with that.
Oh, excuse me.
What is that?
All right, good.
And the only other thing on the page, it, it just, if Scott wants to, you know, to. Sometimes resolution is capitalized, sometimes it's not, sometimes it's zoning resolution, sometimes it's not, sometimes it's right of way.
On this page?
Yeah, all over this. So if you want to, good, if not. I'm not going to.
All right, what, what?
Though, I'm just saying, sometimes the word resolution is capitalized and sometimes not.
I thought you said right of way.
Yeah, no, sometimes it says zoning resolution, sometimes it just says this resolution, sometimes it says right of way. With hyphens, without hyphens, I'm just. Consistency is mine.
So. Wait.
Page eighteen.
No, no, wait a minute.
So what is that? What does that even say? Cancellation of conditional use. For signs approved through the conditional use process prior to these amendments. Comma.
Prior to the date.
In the event that the owner, is that what?
Hmm.
Is it a comma and then?
You may be right, you may be right. Cancellation.
Where signs approved through the conditional. Use process prior to the date. Oh. It's not. Yeah, it's not a good sentence.
Well, no, I, I think it is, it's saying, you know, so for any signs that were approved prior to these, if the owner fails to comply, that permit may be revoked. It's a kind of a weird sentence, but.
So amendments.
So we're going to have to connect the first part of this sentence to the second part.
Well.
Well, instead of a period, you need a comma, it sounds like. But would it make more sense? To reorder that?
Things approved.
See, we got cancellation of the conditional use permit, but then with a colon. And then we start, that's what you're, what Scott's, I think, expressing a concern about is the wording here, then, after that, what's it saying?
I think maybe the, we need to take out in the event that and put the word i- if the owner of any sign or property, maybe that. Um, for signs approved through the conditional use process, if the owner of. Any sign or property fails to comply with the terms of this zoning resolution, said permit may be revoked. Upon compliance with the following terms, what permit? Oh, conditional use permit.
And delete the phrase in the event that.
Yeah. But even then, I mean, if a sign approves through.
Signs approved.
For signs. Maybe, instead of. With a conditional use permit, instead of through the conditional use process. For signs. Um. With a conditional use permit approved prior to. The date of these amendments.
Oh, I got you. Yeah.
If the owner of, of that sign. Fails to comply with the terms of the, this zoning resolution, that permit may be revoked upon. Compliance with the following. Notice.
All right, cancellation of conditional use permit. And then it starts for signs approved.
No, for signs within.
Or signs.
With a conditional.
Granted. For signs granted?
For signs.
Add a colon.
Maybe just, for signs with a conditional use permit, is that how you would, you wouldn't call it then?
It almost needs to, for the red part to be shoved in the middle of the second sentence. In the event that the owner of any property or sign approved through the conditional. Use.
Maybe, yeah, I'd, I'd go with that.
Fails to comply with the terms of them. So can I just? Can I fix that?
Mm-hmm. You, you do, you make it sound how you.
I messed it up. I added the red part because once we took out the additional use section.
Go, Scott, go.
I wanted to make sure that worked, and then I didn't make it connect, so.
So you're saying it'll start with if.
In the event.
Or in the event, okay.
So go across out for signs approved, that, all the red, possible allow.
No, it'll move down in the, for, in the event that the owner of any sign or property.
Fails to comply. With the terms of.
The owner of any sign approved through the conditional use permit process prior to these amendments. Fails to comply with the terms of this zoning resolution, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, that sounds good. Scott will fix.
Hmm.
I'll read it.
That was my notes. Scott will reword.
All right, Scott, read it again. I'm trying to get it, I don't have it yet.
In the event.
It starts with in the event.
In the event that the owner of any sign.
Yes.
Approved through the conditional use. Permit process prior to these amendments. Fails to comply with the terms of this zoning resolution. Said permit may be revoked upon compliance. Maybe.
That reads better, much good, much better.
Much good?
The word, yeah, much good. Much better. It's much good.
Much best.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah. So. We got that again, we want to restate it. So we have a record of it, that's. We're all clear on it.
All right.
Go ahead, Scott.
We just, no, he just said it like four times. You can just send it to me, I'm good.
In the event that the owner of any sign. Approved through the conditional use process. Prior to the date of these amendments. Fails to comply with the terms of this zoning resolution, said permit may be revoked upon compliance with the following terms. That's kind of the way it reads, right? And you're going to retype it this way. For our final version.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Eighteen.
Uh. We're going on page eighteen. Which is the last page.
My little page. What do you got?
You don't have anything?
No. No.
I got, I got two words.
Oh, he does have something.
Cause right away is.
Is there any page in here that, that you, that we missed that you have to go back to? No. So, go ahead, Tom.
Page eighteen. Number three, the zoning inspector shall store any such removed sign and shall notify the owner thereof of its location by ordinary mail. If the owner of any sign fails to claim the same within thirty days, after the mailing of notice by the zoning inspector, said sh- said sign may be destroyed. And I just added the words, or discarded.
Great.
Sure. Sounds great.
Just couldn't help yourself.
Can we just replace destroyed with discarded?
We could.
Sounds like a good event for your community.
He doesn't have to necessarily destroy it, he just throws it in the trash.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right. We're not telling him he must destroy it.
He, it may be, maybe he likes it, he wants to keep it.
If we leave it stored in there, then he's got an option. If we just put discard, then he's got to throw it out.
Says maybe, doesn't say he has to.
All right.
Well, there's that ambiguity.
Made it. Through article twenty-two.
Okay.
So there is one, there is one thing I'd like to, like to suggest. And if no. We'll move on. Um, we did, most of the work we did today was on prohibited signs. And I think going back to section twenty-two oh two, classification of signs, we've got A, those are signs which require no permit. As identified and described in section twenty-two oh. B, those signs which acquire a permit, and I would add section C, those signs which are prohibited as identified and described in section twenty-two oh five. So it, to me, it closes the loop. We say twenty-two oh three, no permit, twenty-two oh four, you need a permit, twenty-two oh five, prohibited, don't even ask.
No, because it's a classification of the signs.
That's how I saw it.
They fall into that category of being prohibited.
Thank you.
I can see that.
Got it.
That's it.
All right, so we add A, uh, C here then, Scott. On twenty-two oh two. Those signs that are prohibited.
What section was that again, Tom?
Um, it's in section twenty-two oh two, classification signs. I'm adding back a section C.
Yeah, what, what section was the twenty-two?
Twenty-two oh five was.
Yeah, in section twenty-two oh five. Which is the prohibited section.
I mean, can you top it, said?
I said.
Just for the minute.
See, those signs. Which are prohibited. As identified and described. In section twenty-two point oh five, period.
And you want that twenty-two oh two?
And that would be section C of twenty-two oh two. So you've got no permit, a permit, prohibited. Um.
No, you said you only had one thing.
That was it.
Twenty-two oh five. Well, that's where.
I know.
Two words. Two words. We're going to, we're going to vote on this. We're going to set up a hearing, we're going to set up a hearing.
Um, I was going to ask about that. We, you know, we're, we're, we've made some additional changes, not that many, they are minor. Um. We can. Scott will bring us the, the next draft. Do we want to set the date for hearing and then we'll have the draft that we go through at the hearing? We will review the final, quote, 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 final draft. Uh, that will go to the trustees then, following that hearing, but we could set the hearing date, or we could set the hearing date for the same as, uh, we've already established one hearing.
Yeah.
July seventh, we could put this one on July seventh also.
Sure.
Yep, I'm good with that.
Yep.
All right, good with that, so, uh, we're going to set the hearing date, this will be, oh, we didn't, did you have the form by chance? Probably don't. But.
I'll have a next year version.
We'll have to, let me see, let me see, I got one.
That's, normally Scott would be here on a workshop meeting. We need to check if he can come on the seventh, which is not a workshop meeting date.
No, it's not. We could do it on the.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Let's see when Scott's available.
Yeah. Scott.
Has to bring us the new one.
Seventh or the fourteenth.
I mean, if it's okay to do the seventh, I would. The seventh might work better, for me.
Sure.
Okay. If, if you're available, we can do it on the seventh.
Good.
Um. And then we would set, the other one we set for, um.
Seven forty-five.
Forty-five, we can set this one for. Eight fifteen.
Why don't we do eight? So if we get done early, we start early.
Yeah, but if we want, I, I'm thinking of him, okay, he comes in at eight, he has to wait till we get to it then.
Yeah, so the other hearing is that.
Seven forty.
AR one to FR one.
Yeah.
Right, they're coming in at seven forty-five.
He's pretty, pretty.
Is that the meeting where you guys, like, you talk through the whole zoning, or you just accept it and? Initiate? I don't know how you do it.
Yeah, we set it for eight o'clock, when it started at eight o'clock. But it may, we may. I don't know that we'll be finished in fifteen minutes with the other one. We, we could be, we should be, but.
Well, if we set him for eight fifteen, we could actually go over what he's, the new stuff that he brings and then just have the hearing and go through it pretty quick.
It's fine.
You don't mind coming, potentially having to wait a few minutes before we get to it, huh?
Unless the R.
There's other things that we could do if we finish that other.
We're in denial on that rezoning, then I might not want to sit here during. I don't think we will, based on what I.
So, all right. You're, you're, you're Scott, you're saying you're fine if we do it at eight o'clock and you have to wait a while.
Sure.
All right, so we'll set this hearing then. Uh, which will be oh seven.
Yep.
Uh, for eight o'clock. And it will be a hearing. Um. To. I was looking for that document, see if I've got it here.
So, the one where you have to fill out, that was.
Yeah, here's one. Oh, sorry, it's wrong one. That's the rezoning application tracking form. Yeah. And we, that's not what we put up online.
No, nobody else would need that.
No, we don't want anyone else using it.
Oh. Oh. Let's see if I got one.
You have one in the office that you can, go put your hands on possibly. Well, we don't, I don't think we have a number on it. It's the, it's the application form that we use for.
Is this what you're looking for?
Here it is, I did have it.
Oh, good, that's what it looks like.
I'll go ahead and we'll fill it in, in ru- handwritten and then you can type it up. I did have it. Just got it paper clipped to something else. All right.
It'll be the same with a different title.
Uh, this is application HTCC twenty-five oh seven.
Putting in an application or an application. There's a lot.
For revising the application.
We actually are working on revising the applications, so yes. There is an application for revising. Which is not very surprising with the zoning commission. We love a good, uh. Advicement on things. I have learned the forms matter here.
Revision of existing Article twenty-two. Oh, actually, Ar- Article four, too. Re- revising the definition, Article four. And twenty-two. Okay. The hearing date, we're going to set for July seventh at eight P M.
Yes.
So, I would like to make a comment on the work that we've done on Article twenty-two. By my rough calculation, we took a fifteen-page article and reduced it to eight. Yes.
Great reduction.
I like that.
Yeah. Will you add the, uh, I didn't write out the name, the full name of the article, you can.
I'll do all the time work.
Every new district adds.
But we are assigning application number HTCC. Twenty-five oh seven.
Way to the binder, we tell.
Okay. Very good, I'm glad to have that one behind us. Now that leaves for the ones that we still have to do, which were. Where do we stand with that, Scott?
Well, as I was looking at, like, we already did planned industrial, so industrial was the only other one. I know I sent that late today, but that was.
Yeah.
Other than the stuff in the back, which I think you all determined last time you were just.
Yeah, we've identified that.
Needed to do something, you could.
Right.
Well, industrial would be the only one that I would, I did see some things that I was able to just make it more consistent with some of the other straight district.
We, um. The only ones that were left would be those, uh, non-conforming uses zoning, uh, certificates. Zoning Commission Amendments, Board of Zoning Appeals, Enforcement, Severability and Repeal. Those, we don't need to really address anything else. But the only one left, it's industrial. And we decided that Harlem and Center Village Residential likewise did not need to be. Am I correct?
Well, I think, yeah, I, I mean, I think with, with the whole strategy of the township up in the air, I don't think.
Yeah, why address that since that's.
We know where it's, it's headed.
Potentially going to be impacted greatly by whatever is decided with regard to potential for another, uh, overlay district. That will become the center of village.
I, I do have this in the packet though, this is Article, uh, twenty-four.
Non-conforming uses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that, I don't know. It, it's in with, with industrial and planned industrial, I don't know why we all click together.
Um, cause that one time I handed those out as the ones that potentially we would be needing to address in the future.
And you've non-conforming uses, you think is, we can, I'll read through it and just see. Okay.
Unless there's something, do you think there's something in non-conforming uses that we need to address?
I haven't read it, so.
And if I have no idea, go for it.
Anything on NEF?
Yes, that's our agenda still, correct. All right, so we're set for the hearing on this in July. Moving it forward, July seventh. Articles four and Article twenty-two. And then for NEF, let me, what I wanted to make in the announcement about and, um. I contacted Joe Clase as to whether or not we could cancel our. Date of Ju- uh, the twenty-ninth that we were holding for possible discussion of, uh, the NEF. Planed. Plan, as a planned district or development plan for a planned district. And he indicated that he didn't want that canceled, yet he's going to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The Board of Zoning Appeals does have a hearing scheduled now, uh, because Mike cited. This property with a cease and desist order. And they have appealed that cease and desist order to the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is. The step that they would need to take before they could potentially go to court. They went to court without taking that step. The court could simply say, you didn't exhaust your legal opportunities at the local level, you need to do that first. So they are doing that, but then Joe didn't want to cancel the, um. Temporary hold we have for a, cause he may, he, at the time that I discussed it with him. Uh, he thought he might be bringing it to us after all. At this point, we don't know. I'll ask Ashley to ca-. And since you're here, Keith, you guys know more about what's happening in terms of what they have scheduled. Or requested to be addressed. You might want to share a few comments with the zoning commission about where that stands. In terms of their appeal.
They didn't submit an application, we did set a hearing and, and, and it's, you know, this month, uh.
At the sixteen?
We will probably, I, I may want to subpoenas. You were supposed to testify, because we need more information about what was said before. And so I don't know, we still got to talk to Corey. I was on vacation, no, Mike's been on vacation, so we haven't got, like, let, find out what's going to happen next. Uh, and time getting short.
What, so what time is the hearing?
I don't remember.
Seven thirty-five.
Seven thirty-five.
Yeah, so, uh, essentially what they did was they submit, they did not submit an application. Um, they submitted an administrative appeal, essentially to appeal. Mike's decision to give them a cease and desist and tell them to stop using that property the way they are because they have not been approved for it. So they are asking for an administrative appeal. Works essentially told them, until you take it to your local level, you cannot bring it to us. You have to have a hearing with. You know, Board of Zoning Appeals for the Administrative Appeal, um. They had four topics that they were gonna try to get the Board of Zoning Appeals to say, yes, this could possibly work, such as a non-conforming use. Or, um, a grandfathered in use. They're saying essentially if somebody before them used. It as a construction company area, they should be able to also, because there are court cases that say that use goes with the land, not with the. Um, so they're gonna, that is one of their arguments out of four that they have. So. Essentially, they're not coming with an application to the BZA yet. They are coming to the BZA to see if they even have grounds for an application. That is what the hearing is going to be on. The hearing is going to be about, do we have grounds to either come to you guys? Or some sort of zoning change, or can we go to BZA? And look at a possible like non-conforming use agreement kind of thing. So this hearing is purely. Finding out what they were told, if those things were in writing, who said them, what was said? And what their legal right is. Now, if the BZA completely turns them down and says, no, none of these are going to work for you. We're not even gonna, you know. Give you that opportunity, um, because none of this will work, then they can go to the courts and say, we want to put in. Here, an appeal to see what we can do, but until they come to one of you, they can't do anything. So they're in the BZA for the appeal, that's what it's going to be. Now, Clase did say that they're going to be bringing in. Um, you know, they're subpoenaing, um, the current zoning inspector, the previous zoning inspector. Um, they will have their attorney there. We've discussed having our attorney there for us. Uh, so essentially it's going to be kind of what we said was like a little mini court hearing.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have a court reporter.
Do we have one? We haven't decided.
I was gonna talk to you guys about that because I can tell you right now, I'm not going to be able to keep up with that.
We probably should.
Yeah, so, um, I do have connections for a couple of court reporters.
Well, you're, I think that, um. Under the guidelines that you have, that's a decision that you can make.
But, but like you said, he was on vacation. But that was one of my concerns when Clase was presenting was, I can keep, keep up pretty well with my notes and I'm a pretty quick typer, but. Needing to know word for word what is said, there's no way.
I, I can. Proceed not making the decision of the first hearing, we may, we may get continued, because we won't have enough information.
And Joe said the same thing, that he's only seen a couple of these, that they usually take a few, a few tries, but.
You know, I, I don't know what's, what they're going to present, we don't know what we're going to present yet, and.
But essentially that's where we are, is they're just trying to appeal the decision to see if they should even go in with an application or just go to court.
Pays for the court reporter.
For any hearing at which the applicant desires a record to be made, the applicant shall give notice to the zoning secretary. At least ten days prior to the hearing, requesting that a court reporter be retained to make such record. And the applicant shall deposit with the request cashing the amount established by the trustees to be used to defray the expense of making such a record. In all hearings where no request for a record has been made, the notes of the zoning secretary. And the Board of Zoning Appeals shall serve as the sole record and transcript.
I, you know, and, and as I, as I said at the time. In my thirty years, I don't think we've had a, a case come where we had an appeal of the same instructor's decision. Now, I know of one prior to maybe on the BCA, but we can't find the record of it.
Well, um.
Definitely feel like there's going to be a lot of neighbors coming in to speak and have their opinion. Because even when just an application was put in, there was a lot of opinion, a lot of speaking, uh, which. This is the perfect opportunity for them to come in and have their voices heard, um.
So the BZA hearing process allows that sort of thing too?
Although, oh, the neighbors get notified of the hearing.
Okay.
Those letters went out today.
But if this is going to take more than one hearing to resolve. What are we doing with the preliminary? We're not gonna, we're not, we're not gonna have a preliminary meeting with NEF. Until this side of it's resolved one way or the other.
And that was my.
We don't know how long it's going to take.
Whether or not, we're not gonna have a, we're not gonna have a preliminary meeting if.
Yeah.
The hearing isn't concluded.
Yeah.
Essentially, if they continue the hearing, I will put a public notice out saying that the preliminary me- meeting is canceled because. Um, there's no reason to.
Right.
Which, I haven't even put out that we're having a preliminary meeting because we were so far ahead.
Right.
I didn't want to going out three months ago and people saying, I don't remember seeing that, well, so I was gonna post.
And you don't have, as we talk today, you don't have to give it. Thirty days or ten days even. If you do it a week before the hearing, that would.
As long as it's ten days, yeah. Yeah, so.
It's not a hearing, it's just a, it's just a preliminary meeting. It's a, it's a meeting of the zoning commission, so.
And now that I don't have to put it in the newspaper, that's helpful because I can post it and it's.
Right.
It's done right there. I don't have to wait the two or three days for the newspaper to come out. Um, now with this hearing because of. The degree that it is, Kyle did find something in, uh, over rules and regulations that it does need to be posted in the paper, so I will be doing that.
Well, when it comes to what, what you're going to do about the record, if, if the. Trustees, or if you, Keith, if the zoning, uh, Board of Zoning Appeals wants to have a. But insofar as paying for the, getting that transcript to the applicant, there's language in here that says they would pay for it.
If they want a copy, they got paid for their copy.
Yeah. So it'd be up to the trustees and the BZA whether or not they want to use a court reporter. They don't ha- you don't have to.
That's a discussion that I was gonna have with them is, do you guys want a court reporter because? As much as I would love to be that fast, I am not. And I feel like something like this needs.
It is a good document.
It's a better document than what I'm going to be ever, I mean, I can watch the video back, but there are times you can't understand what people are saying because.
Especially because of the audio.
Breaks every time we try to use it.
I don't want to miss something. If we need this for court documents later. They're gonna need a court reporter quality document. So we'll have that discussion with probably the trustees and.
Yeah, the trustees can pay for the court reporter, but then when it gets transcribed.
That's when it gets really expensive.
Yeah, if, if they, if they want it, but they have to, they have to give notice to the zoning, it says in here zoning secretary, well. I guess that's you.
When's, when's the mic supposed to be back?
I think.
Okay.
I think Scott wants to get on.
That's it, guys. Yeah, and I, Scott, we're finished for the night. We're going to see you back here on the seventh. At which time, when will you get the, uh, revised draft to us? And remember, in this case, you, you still can give us the red line.
Yeah. Well.
You don't necessarily have to give us.
I'll give you a clean one. It's easy to make it.
Yeah, but it's easy to give us the clean version along with the red line. And the trustees will still want the red line, whatever we have. Uh, once we have the hearing and move it forward, they'll want us, they, they haven't changed their position on that. Have they had?
Nope.
They still want the red line version. I thought. Okay, so we'll see you on the seventh, and if you can get us, uh, the document. A few days in advance, maybe the.
Oh, definitely.
That'd be great. All right, thank you, Scott. Good night. Have a good month. We'll see you in Jul- in July. Anything else to come before the group tonight? Next week, uh, we will whack over those applications. Changes that we've made, those forms, and hopefully then get that in place so that the document will address the issue of the fees.
Yes.
So there won't be that kind of confusion continuing beyond another couple of weeks.
Yes.
There's nothing else? A motion to adjourn?
Make motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Brittany, and seconded by Johnny. Uh, any objection or any further discussion?
At nine eighteen.
Hearing done, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, no. Okay, we're adjourned.